We will call our regular council meeting to order. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to our regular bimonthly council meeting. We actually have a public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. Guess we better do roll call first. Roll call, sorry.
Mr. Farmer?
Here.
Henning?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Merkel?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Bachman?
Here.
And Stevens?
Here. We have a public hearing scheduled for tonight. And we're gonna have to wait a couple minutes on that because it was advertised at 7:30. So we're gonna kinda work around our agenda here. So you'll be up in just a few minutes. On our agenda, we have to make another amendment on here. We originally had a special presentation from an attorney who was gonna come give us some information on the marijuana industry. And she actually is ill, so she couldn't come tonight. So we're gonna end up passing by that. The next item on our agenda is our clerk's report.
You have before you the meeting minutes of May 2nd, 2024.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that's unanimous. And it looks like we have some new business on here. We actually have four resolutions. One is regarding our public hearings. So I'm gonna skip by the first one. And we'll go to, will you read the second resolution, please?
Resolution R-052431. A resolution extending moratorium on the issuing and processing of permits allowing retail dispensaries, cultivators, or processing of adult-use marijuana within the city of Clayton, Ohio.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve the resolution as written by Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Farmer. All in favor?
Aye.
I just had a question. The paper yesterday said that the applications will be available by 7th of June.
You are correct.
And that it will be available to sell by the 7th of September.
That is their plan, yes.
And we're making this to the 15th before anybody can even apply to Clayton to get...
Yes, and we are not unique in this. We are not the only city that is extending their moratoriums. Even if council decides that this is what you wanna do, if you wanna allow recreational marijuana sales, processing, and distribution in the city, this will give staff an opportunity to look at our zoning areas and where council wants these to be placed. Because as it stands right now, if we don't do that, they can go into any retail location, potentially, any retail location that we have in the city.
Okay, I have one other question. The, it reads cultivators or processors. Don't we already have a processor?
We do, but for medical marijuana, not recreational.
Just for medical?
Just for medical. I don't make the rules.
Anything else? Any other questions or comments?
Just wanna double check. So this is something, you know, let's say hypothetical, the state decides on everything tomorrow, and it passes and gets signed. We could amend this at any time with no issues?
You could.
Okay, we have the motion from Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Farmer on the table.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, let the record show that... I'm in. I'm in, I'm on the floor. Yes. Yes. Okay, so let the record show that passed unanimously. Will you read the third resolution, please?
Resolution R-052432. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield via the Ohio Benefits Cooperative for the provision of group health insurance benefits from September 1st, 2024 through August 31st, 2025.
Ms. Whitman?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we are proposing that, we're proposing to renew the city's current plan, that's Anthem High Deductible Medical Insurance Plan through the OBC. This option would keep the deductible the same and coverage the same and increase the premium rates by 6.7%. We did reach out to staff through survey and found that some staff members may be interested in a PPO plan rather than in a high-deductible health plan. So through the OBC, we are able to offer two options to employees. So we would like to also add the PPO plan. So depending on each employee's needs, they can pay between the high-deductible health plan or the PPO plan. Just so you're aware, we did reach out to the broker, McGowan Breybender, cuz, you know, with our 6.7%, we did find that medical renewals, if we went on our own for groups between 51 and 99, they're coming in at about 12% at this point. So we're still well below.
And Elaine, with the offering the two plans, it's no additional cost to the city?
That is correct, yes. It would be the same cost. It would just be increasing the budget, that's 6.7%.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve the resolution as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Will you read the fourth resolution, please?
Resolution R-052433. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with ORC Olend Associates LLC for the provision of professional right-of-way acquisition services for the Hoak Road Widening Project, project ID number 115202.
Mr. Sanders?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you guys are aware, the wonderful Hoak Road project is, this will be the first step of taking this thing to fruition, I guess we'll say. This is the, we were awarded a CMAC grant through the MVRPC. Through that particular grant, the city is responsible for 100% of the right-of-way acquisition. So this, we had to pick through, I think we had four applications for the right-of-way acquisition, four companies, excuse me. And ORC, which is ORC Olend, was selected as the people to do the right-of-way. And on the, approximately 20 parcels out there.
Randy, I just have one question. There's nothing down here about how much the ORC costs us.
We had an estimate back when they did the scope, now keep in mind, that was three years ago, of $138,000. That's the purchase of the right-of-way, or excuse me, of the company and the purchasing of the property. We think that'll be quite a bit higher than that. It's very tough to determine what that dollar amount's gonna be, cuz each property's gonna be a different figure, of course.
They don't get paid per lot or per...
They get paid per parcel as well.
Parcel, okay.
What is it, what is it per parcel? Do you know that?
I do not know. They were all over the place. We do have a list of them. If you wanna see them, I'd be happy to get that to you.
Well, and one of the obstacles, so we had to base the selection on experience, is basically what it was. And we weren't permitted to ask about cost. It was an, that's an ODOT rule.
Yeah, because it's a federally funded project, even though it's 100% of our money, because it's a federally funded project, we have to follow the ODOT guidelines, which basically is their scoring system. So painstaking as it was for Amanda, myself, and Ellen, we had to score them that way. And you have to use the experience. You are not allowed to ask about cost.
I'll move for approval.
Motion to approve the resolution as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Obstain.
Okay, Ms. Kelly abstained, so we have a roll call on that, please.
Farmer?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Abstain.
Bachman?
Due to the reason it impacts my family's property.
Thank you. Bachman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Yes. And let the record show that we're unanimous with one abstention. Okay, that's it for the resolutions. And I think we've hit our time limit, so we're gonna go forward, we're gonna go back to one of the first items on our agenda, to our public hearing. So is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll move, second.
Motion to open the public hearing by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Bachman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we're open to the public right now.
Good evening, Council. Ellen? I'm sorry, you need to swear in, anybody who intends to speak.
Sorry. Anyone who think you may want to speak in this, it doesn't require you to speak, but anyone that may want to speak, if you could stand up and raise your right hand, cuz we have to swear you in. Ellen, and the, yes. And it's really simple. "I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God." I do. Thank you. Okay, the two folks are sworn in to speak, so. Okay, Ellen?
Good evening, Council. Tonight we have case number PC24-01 pertaining to parcel number M60031020112, and a parcel that has not been created yet for a total of 4.8715 acres that will be owned by Kate's Pizza Place LLC. This parcel is located in the Village of North Clayton in a PDD. Oh, sorry. Introduction to application. Application number PC24-01 for plan modification to a previously approved final development plan, specifically Phase 2 of the Village of North Clayton, received on April 4th, 2024. Applicant is Ferguson Construction on behalf of Kate's Pizza Place LLC, also known as Bella Sorella. Property owners are Kate's Pizza Place LLC, which is the subject parcel, and Ohio SPV LLC, which is the parcel to the south. Public notice was printed in the Eaton Registered Herald on April 10th, 2024, and letters to property owners within 300 feet of the subject property were postmarked and mailed on April 8th, 2024. The property is located at 1405 Esther Price Way in the Village of North Clayton. The parcel numbers are, again, M60031020112, and a parcel that has not been created yet for a combined total acreage of 4.8715. The current zoning of the project is PDD, also a planned development district. Staff reviewed and provided to each planning commission member the following documents: the affidavits, the site plans, and the narrative. Applicant desires to purchase 1.0831 acres from parcel number M60031020108, and then combine it with parcel M60031020112 for a total of 4.8715 acres. The applicant is working with Kate's Pizza LLC to build a restaurant, which is in the originally approved Phase 2 portion of the Village of North Clayton Planned Development District. The Phase 2 portion of the Village of North Clayton Planned Development District was approved by Clayton City Council November 17th, 2005. This is a map of the surrounding area. The two subject parcels are highlighted in red. We can see that there's an RSD district, a PDD, and an RMX nearby. This is a more specific area with both parcels, again, highlighted in red. Analysis of request. The most recent modification to the final development plan for Phase 2, PC23-04, saw an approved restaurant use instead of a sportsplex use at the location. The applicant will still be required to address all comments provided by city staff and the city's contracted engineering department provided in PC23-04. The new restaurant, Bella Sorella, plan to use this area to expand their business in the future. They are now moving forward with purchasing this extra acreage to have the ability to expand their business in the future. Clayton staff has reviewed the application and have no comments. Clayton's contracted engineering department, the Klangers Group, has received the plans and have no comments on the property line change. The Klangers Group will still review the project as a whole as part of PC23-04 before building begins. The modification request will have no negative impact on the community in terms of traffic, stormwater, or life safety factors. If the property were located outside of a planned development district or PDD, staff would be able to approve the application administratively. The request meets all the requirements of a minor subdivision. The newly configured parcel will continue to meet all the required development standards of the zoning district. Since the property is located within a PDD and the proposed parcel configuration differs from what was originally approved by Clayton City Council, it must come before the planning commission and also city council for approval. This was the originally approved final development plan, and the area in question is circled in red. This is the first part of the project plans. This will be the split. They're gonna split just over an acre from the parcel to the south. And then this is the second part of the plans, where they will combine it with the parcel to the north.
I just wanna make sure I'm looking at this right. So the parcel to the south will still remain, it's gonna be four acres afterwards, after the split?
I believe it will be just under four.
Okay.
Yes, it will be four acres. I'm sorry, it'll be exactly four acres.
Ellen, everywhere in our packet and on the presentation you just made, it says "purchase." But I've never seen a number anywhere. Is this part of their deal that we approved before, Amanda, or...
Not, so this is separate. The council is not considering the purchase of the property. That is a private transaction between Kate's Pizza Place or Ferguson Construction and the property owner to the south.
I mean, the print's listed as City of Clayton property.
The, well...
That's the only way that I'm asking the question.
No, 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 I agree. And that's a typo. This is just a recycled from the previous application, so that's what it is. We're not considering the purchase of property. There is no City of Clayton property involved. It is just basically them purchasing property from the property to the south and combining with the property that they now own to the north.
Where the sports arena was supposed to be...
Yes.
Was part of the city.
It was. It was ours, and we sold it to Kate's Pizza Place.
And we've sold it then?
It is sold, it is closed.
Okay.
Planning and zoning guidance. Section 1111.21 of the Clayton Zoning Code addresses planned development districts or PDDs. Section 1111.21. P details the steps and processes for a plan modification for a PDD. Subsection 1 states, "Because of the difficulty in being able to supply precise data at the time of approval of final development plan, it may be necessary to make certain modifications to the final development plan at a later date." Subsection 2 states, "Modification to the final development plan shall not deter from the general intent and purpose as originally approved by the city council. No modifications unless approved by the city of council shall be approved that will increase density or intensity, decrease parking and loading areas, and reduce usable open space, or reduce distance between structures and the perimeter property lines." Staff recommendation. The proposed request meets all the requirements of a planned development modification found in section 1111.21. P. Point 2. More specifically, the proposed use will not increase density or intensity of the community when compared to the originally approved plan. In comparison to the originally approved plan, the proposed use will decrease the density and intensity of the land as a result of the request. The proposed use will not decrease parking and/or loading areas of the overall development. In comparison to the originally approved plan, the proposed parking and loading areas will neither increase nor decrease as a result of the request. The applicant will be required to submit stormwater plans, which will be reviewed and approved by the city's contracted engineering department. The applicant has already submitted a first round of stormwater plans and received comments from the city's contracted engineering department. The applicant is continuing to work with the engineering department on the stormwater plans. The applicant will be required to conform with all the applicable landscape requirements found in the Village of North Clayton's Development Standards Notebook. Staff recommends the plan modification application be approved as submitted. The proposed plan modification of the Village of North Clayton Planned Development District included with Ferguson Construction's application will have no impact on the most recent modification approval and has no impact on the overall safety, traffic, and stormwater functions of the neighborhood. That's all I have for you.
Any questions or comments for Ellen or for Amanda?
The planning commission did unanimously recommend approval.
Did you have any comments from other persons of the planning median, other pro- or con regarding...
For staff?
Well, I mean, since it would've been notification going out to other property owners within 300 feet...
No, one person inquired about the project, and they were just asking what it was.
No one spoke up to say opposition or support, or that was it? Okay. Cuz there was no notes in the information here, just to make sure that there was no adverse commentary that might have...
No, there was not.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in attendance that would be an opponent of this? Someone that would not want this development or this action to go forward? Seeing none, I'm gonna say no one's here that would be opposed to that. Is there any proponents that would like to speak? And seeing no action there, I'm gonna say...
I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning and Mr. Merkel.
I guess this doesn't really necessarily fall under those. I just will, I guess I would ask the developer, because I've been asked so many times, because there is a lot of excitement in the community for this timeframe. Are you guys, are you aware of any timeframe yet? Or it would be helpful to us as a body to be able to tell residents.
You almost got out without speaking. You can blame him for that.
Hello, I'm Jeff King. I'm Vice President of Ferguson Construction, 825 South Ludlow, Dayton, Ohio. I guess I kinda wouldn't have explained why we're here again today. When we were doing the plans, and we absolutely loved working with Galen Elizabeth, it was determined when we were doing it that in order for them to expand, which we think they're going to do, it would be in their best interest and the most cost-effective way to do it would be for us to acquire more land. So Ferguson actually is purchasing the land and donating it to them. So we're excited, we love working with them, even though there's been a delay in order to do this, and we were able to acquire the land from the property owner to the south, which happened actually in a few days. We're very excited to get going. So our plan is, hopefully, the loan closing will happen next, it will be starting in the next few weeks. It'll be about five months until completion.
So completion still of this year?
Yes.
That's amazing.
Yes.
Do you have a date set for the groundbreaking?
It's June 12th.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. King? Right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and I believe the public session has already been closed.
So... We close it, right? I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing by Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Gorman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We'll do it twice, you know?
And then I would move... ...station of the planning... Oh, I thought you already read it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, will you read the first resolution? Now we're circling back to the resolution that we skipped.
Resolution RPC2401. A resolution adopting, rejecting, or modifying the recommendation of the planning commission to approve request for modification of the PUD final development plan for the villages of North Clayton.
I'll move for approval to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt the resolution as written by Mr. Henning, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that's unanimous. Congratulations to all on this. We're all super happy about this, so. All right, so that does it for our resolutions. And the next item on our agenda is our city manager's report. Amanda?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And just so you know, since it was a resolution, there's no waiting period. It goes into effect immediately, so we're good to go. Just a few items for you this evening. One, just a reminder that council voted to operate on a summer schedule, so we have our next meeting on Thursday, June 20th, and then not again until July 18th. City offices will be closed on Monday, May 27th, 2024, in observance of Memorial Day. And then city offices will be closed on Wednesday, June 19th, in observance of Juneteenth. We do have a request for additional ARBA funds. We have about $128,000 left to encumber. Staff looked at their budgets and other items that it could be spent on, and we do have a request for a portion of the funds to be used to pay the city's assessed fees for the water projects that we have going on in the city through Montgomery County Soil and Water, and that's a little over $5,000. Replace several ADA ramps that need to be replaced for $4,800. Replace guardrail on Old Mill that's been out for almost, it's a year now, a little over a year. That's $11,536. On Reinhardt, I'm sorry, on Reinhardt. And then a power cot for the fire department at $25,000. So if council is agreeable to those, we can bring those items to you at the June 20th meeting.
Any objections to that?
Okay. And Meadowbrook is celebrating its 100th year this year, so we have a golf scramble on the Saturday, June 1st, 2024. The PGA will be presenting Meadowbrook with a plaque sometime between 12:00 and 1:00 PM. So there is a flyer attached to your city manager's report. That information has gone out on the city's website and the city's social media pages. And we can also do a press release for that as well, so everyone is aware. So if you could all attend, that would be fantastic. So we have had a request from a developer, Schneck Development Group, has contacted the city about potentially developing the 183.1 acres near Main Street. This land is owned residential single unit with the Clayton Improvement District overlay. The CID requires that any development of land over five acres or creating more than five lots be developed as part of a planned development under the zoning code. They have requested that the council allow them to come in for a work session to just discuss the project with you at the June 20th meeting. If council was agreeable to that, we can get that scheduled for 6:30 PM on June 20th.
And that's at Main and Haber?
No, that's at Main and Sweet Potato.
Oh, that's what I meant. That's what I meant.
It's the 183 acres behind where OR was.
Okay.
If council is agreeable to that, we'll get that scheduled.
Anyone disagree with that? Okay.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, the Montgomery County, so we have several projects through Montgomery County Soil and Water going on in the city. And they sent over to us a timeline, and that is attached to your city manager's report as well. I also attached the new resident packet. Council got that in an email about a week ago, and you also received it in this packet. If you have any changes you'd like to see, if you could get that to me sooner rather than later, so we can get that back out on the website and have it available for new residents. And then I also have in here the county bridge work that's going on. So the Heathcliff Bridge, Montgomery County will be working on that beginning June 3rd, and that will be a complete closure, Randy? It'll be, okay, it'll be a brief closure. And then the...
What have they done to that bridge? It's only eight years old, or... The approach, you're saying?
Yeah, the approach. And then... And then the Taywood Bridge is, the Taywood Bridge over I-70 is scheduled for June 2024. They anticipate work to be completed or continue to September 2024, and traffic will be maintained. And the Winger Road Bridge is on schedule to be completed by May 31st. And that is all I have for you this evening, unless you have questions for me.
Yeah, Amanda, I have a question, or not a question.
New packet that we have sent out to new people?
The first sentence in the second paragraph of the mayor's letter says Clayton was founded in 1999. And I think it was 98 if I'm not mistaken.
Was, yeah. Yeah. We'll get it fixed.
Good catch, Tim. Good catch. It is a good catch, actually. Anything else? Anything else for our city manager? Okay, hearing none, we're gonna move forward. The next thing on our agenda is our visitors' comments. And I do know we have some students in the house tonight, so we're gonna reserve your comments. We're not gonna include you in the visitors' comments, we're gonna include you in your own special comments. So is there, I have a list here that I'm gonna read of people that signed in. And if you, it looks like, you know, really only one person wants to speak, but if anyone else wants to speak, then, you know, you'll be given that opportunity. So, Mr. Earl?
Earl Harlem, 6420 Lebon Court, Parkster Vision. We are going to paint down in Horse Gravel on Saturday, 9 o'clock. If it is raining, Elaine and we will put it on social media that we are not going to, we're gonna move it back to another date. We will determine that date at our June meeting. So if it is raining, we won't be painting. But we anticipate no clouds in the sky or anything like that on Saturday, so we'd like to get it done. It's gonna be blue and white. So we're gonna... So we're gonna do all the dugouts, we're gonna do as many dugouts we can in the short time we're gonna be there. So if you'd like, come down and wear your old pants and shirts and paint with us, please come on down. We have quite a few number of people, even the church called, and they're gonna bring a couple people from the church on the way down to, to the event. But we will be there at 9 o'clock to start painting if rain doesn't come. But if it does, Elaine will put it out on social media, so you will be able to not come if you're going to, so.
What colors are green and white, not blue and white?
Well, you gotta talk to somebody a little higher than my pay grade.
We have extra blue paint, is that it?
Yeah. My pay grade's down here, but Randy's just up here, and Randy has a fence, so you understand why.
Randy lives in West Milton, so maybe they're blue and white, I don't know.
I know. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate all the good work.
Not supposed to rain on Saturday.
Christie or Sam Cox? Nope. Rose or Joe Plummer? Nope. Mr. King already spoke, you didn't want to speak again, did you? Zach, must speak. Okay, so that's it for the visitors. Is there anyone else besides the students who wanted to speak tonight? Okay, hearing and seeing none, I'm gonna move on, and we'll go to our council and mayor's comments. We'll start with Mr. Farmer.
Good evening, everybody. Hope you had a good day today. I think one thing I wanted to address, we had brought up Meadowbrook, and, you know, it serves us as a golf course, an event center, a place for community. And feedback I've gotten from residents is they don't have, seem to have a vested interest in it, and I keep coming back to, Amanda, you shared with us, I think a couple meetings ago, the breakdown of costs that go to those community events. One of them, fireworks, I think it took like, takes like two-thirds of it, something like that. The rest of the events, I don't think really burned a big hole in our budget, and I know we're trying to save and we're tight, but I do think the benefit of bringing those events back would be of greater benefit to the city than the cost of trying to save a handful of dollars. So I'd like to ask that next meeting, I'm new at this, I don't know how to request it, but if we had a resolution that we could vote on perhaps to restore those events, except for fireworks, and if I get some feedback behind the scenes, I'll be glad to come back next month and eat crow. But I do think it's something that residents would appreciate if we did that, bring more community, a sense of community to Meadowbrook. So I'll leave it at that. I guess that's all I've got this evening.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Henning?
I had the, I attended the CTC's ribbon cutting last Friday, and if you have not seen that new facility, it is absolutely beautiful. Try to swing by and see it at some point at a community event if you can. There are over 50 programs there, and it is a truly state-of-the-art building that we are so lucky to have here in our Northmont community, so I wanted to just congratulate Superintendent Dr. Nick Weldy on the opening and dedication of the construction now being complete. That's been going on, I think they broke ground, they said five years ago, and obviously COVID did not help, so. It was, it was really nice. Spring sport coaches, I want to acknowledge that. I know we have a lot of volunteers in our Northmont community that are working very hard to keep youth busy on weeknights and weekends, so I just wanted to thank any coaches that are doing that. I know that Clay's three-year-old Tiny Talk, Tiny Talk Soccer League has been truly interesting and exciting to watch, so thanks to the Northmont Association for putting that on. For the graduates of Northmont and CTC, the class of 2024, congratulations to you, and if anyone in here tonight is graduating, also congratulations, but I think you're probably all juniors, otherwise you wouldn't be here. But we hope that you have a successful future ahead of you and continue to give back to the community where you were raised and lived, and we hope you go to college and maybe have interest in coming back one day, if that's the route you go. If you go into a career, think about staying somewhere in our Northmont community. Two last things, Father's Day is June 16th, we won't be here until June 20th, so to all the fathers of the community, thank you for what you do. And finally, Bella Sorrella, I cannot tell you how many times I've had inquiries from people, especially Northmont staff, that is just so excited to have someplace quick and different, so they can order and get food during their lunch breaks, et cetera. So if I had a pepperoni for every time I was asked, I would be able to have a really delicious pepperoni pizza, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gorman?
Yes, Kenny mentioned that the graduations are coming up very shortly, or some of them have already been held, but at the same time, all the other students are getting out of school too, and that means they're gonna be on the streets and in their yards playing ball of some kind, or running, and be careful in your automobiles, because the kids will be out. And also, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Memorial Day and a happy Father's Day, as Kenny said.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Merkel?
At the last meeting, I made mention of the fact that 25 years ago, the city of Clayton basically had voted on its charter, and I had mentioned the persons that had served on the Charter Commission. There were additional persons that had run for the Charter Commission but were not elected, and I think it's also important to keep in mind of the persons who ran but were not part of it, and, because they're still part of the community. And so I went back and tried to find the information from 25 years ago, who the other persons were, just that they're recognized now. The names I found, Steve Gross, Donna Odette, Ernst Collier, Tricia Marks, Joseph McIntyre, Michael Means, Chris Paulus, Shirley and Wilbur Sussman, Luann Weir Evans, was Dave Eppen's wife, and Tim Winchester. These were persons who also had run for the Charter Commission but were not elected to serve, but they were still part of the community that wished to be part of it, and some of them are still with us and others unfortunately have passed. But I just wanted to, you know, let them, those persons know that they were not forgotten, that they're, they're still part of the history of the city. And I do want to say thank you to the city staff for all the work that they've done, and the mention that was made during the workshop session in terms of proposed income tax increase issue, and, you know, the staff has to know that, that the council is behind them in terms of trying to do the best to ensure that we have a sound city and we support the staff. And I want you to know that I support the staff, and I will do whatever I can to ensure that things runs, continue to run and run smoothly, and that I'm here.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kelly?
I too support the staff, and will do anything to help create Clayton a sound city. I also want to say Happy Father's Day to my father, since he's here, and he happens to donate his time to this community and has for the past 40 years to the Northmont community. Thank you. And Bella Sorrella, it's so nice to finally see you come into a freestanding location with a restaurant. Ferguson Construction, great. I am excited for this, have been excited for a long time, even though our business is right next to Marion's Pizza. Marion's gets old, trust me. We would like other options to eat pizza and Italian food, so thank you. Besides the food truck, I loved it, but this is gonna be so great for Clayton, we have options, so thank you again.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Bachmann?
Evening, everyone. First off to, you know, Kevin and multiple staff members, you know, thank you for the presentation, and I'll echo what, you know, other staff members said. I think there is a big support behind you guys, and thank you for, you know, putting, for something that, you know, you think is reasonable and, you know, is potentially, you know, good chance of passing. Obviously, I wanted to shoot a little higher there with half a percent higher, but I think what you guys proposed is something very, very doable, and now it's, you know, all hands on deck to get the information out there. So, you know, again, appreciate all that you guys do, you know, all the time, but for this presentation. This week, National Police Week, I saw, you know, posting yesterday of staff wearing blue. You know, obviously, we've got one of the safest communities because of our great safety services and the leadership that comes with it, and even with that, you know, we've had reminders, obviously with our own officer last year, most recently up in the Cleveland area, Euclid, if you're, I've had some friends from around there, it's probably almost comparable to like a Centerville or a Kettering, it's a big, safe community, and even there, you know, recently had an officer that was killed in the line of duty, so, you know, it's the sad realities of the world of what those men and women face all the time, even in the safest areas, so, you know, I appreciate everything you guys do every day. Mentioned Memorial Day next weekend, you know, obviously that holiday is designated for, you know, those who, you know, gave the ultimate sacrifice and that. Do we know, is Northmont doing something that weekend?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I'll find out and send it out tomorrow.
Okay, yep. I know they traditionally do, you know, do something out of the memorial that they have. I always go out to Brookville, where my, or right outside of there, where my grandfather has passed away, the VFW and the band out there does something nice as well, so. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just a quick wrap-up, I want to say congratulations to Bella Sorrella also, and thank you to Ferguson for what you're doing for the project. Again, it's, this is a, this is a really big thing for us as a city, not only for your bit, for both businesses, but for our city, because, you know, it's, it's a Clayton-based business and first brick and mortar, and, you know, I think this will be a good jumpstart for us out there, so this is really, we're all, I think, super happy, you know, for all involved, so appreciate that. I also want to say, you know, I support our city, our staff 100%. You know, it is super important that we do whatever we can to get the levy passed, we need to get, you know, the communication out, clear communication, and try to look ahead and see what stumbling blocks we might have and anticipate those. I think the people in our city, you know, want, want good services, they want, you know, to be in a safe community, they, they want good roads and all the things that we provide, the sense of community, but sometimes it's, you know, when you hear dollars, people all of a sudden, you know, kind of go blind, so we need to get past that. I'm pretty confident that we will, I think, I think we can do that as a city. So I want to say thanks to everyone for the continued good work, thanks to the council, thanks to our staff, thanks to all of our residents. So we do have some students in here today, and, you know, so we've had students in here for about the past two or three meetings, so you guys waited till the last minute, right? In your school, about, just about done? So what we've had other students do, and we like, we can't give you a complete free pass, so we want you to, each of the students has to come up to the podium, and if you'll state your name and your address, you don't have to live in Clayton, but if, state your name and your address, and if you could just give us like a one word of what your plans are, well, I guess you're sophomores, right? Juniors? Okay, so you don't have to tell us quite yet what you, what your future plans are, but if you do have some, whether it be college, military, career, again, you know, hitchhike around Europe, whatever you want to do, if you could just give us a quick little synopsis of what your plans are. So anyone who's a student here, even on crutches, you have to come up if you can, but if you guys could just come on up and just give us a quick little speech here. Name and address. Um, yes, I got one amendment to that, don't give your address. Yeah. We, we don't want to know, yeah, just your name.
My, you hear me? My name is Tyler Locabe, and I want to be a cybersecurity analyst.
Excellent, well, thanks for coming. Sorry about that.
My name is Joshua Rodriguez, and I have not yet planned what my future will be.
Okay, good, well, I appreciate you coming, even on crutches, yeah. You made the effort.
My name is Kaylee Carter, and I plan on going to Kent State for anthropology and then getting my PhD in psychology.
Excellent, thanks for coming tonight.
All right, my name is Terry Locabe, and I'm going to college for computer science.
Excellent, thanks for coming in tonight.
Hello, my name is Brandon Russell, and I plan on going to college to play football.
Excellent, thanks for coming in tonight.
My name is Tyler Hosman, and I plan on going to college, and then after that, probably going into the music field.
Very nice, thanks for coming in tonight.
My name is Donovan Post, I plan on going to the military after high school.
Excellent, thanks for coming in.
My name is Cedric Works, I plan on going to college to play football.
Very nice, thanks for coming in tonight.
I'm Alicia Harris, and I will plan on going to Sinclair to hopefully become ultrasound technician.
Excellent, well, thanks for coming in tonight. Any others, is that it? We do appreciate you coming, and I think you probably have to have your papers signed, you know, many of us can sign it, so after the meeting, just come up, and we're, as you can see, we're pretty informal here, but we do appreciate you all coming in. And with that, with that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, is it, does anyone want to adjourn? Motion to adjourn by Mr. Gorman. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?